Broadcast has been set.
Thank you so much. The time is now five oh six P M and the March twelfth, two thousand twenty four Policy and Governance Committee meeting will come to order. We'll start with welcome and opening remarks from the committee as well as the chair. Good evening and welcome to the March twelfth, two thousand twenty four Policy and Governance Committee meeting. I am Jonathan Briggs, Chair of the Policy and Governance Committee and Member of the Board. It brings me great pleasure to welcome everyone to tonight's meeting and I look forward to our work tonight. We will now have introductions of our committee members, starting with Board Members, then Administration Staff, then Board Office Staff, and the Board Legal Counsel. So we will start with Board Members.
Hi, everyone. I am the Vice Chair Lolita E. Walker. I'm excited to be here and be part of the Policy and Governance Committee. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. This is Dr. Miller. I'm a member of the Policy and Governance Committee, and thank you for your time this evening. I also want to state that I'm will be leaving out around seven to participate in another virtual meeting. So I hope that we will have as much as possible wrapped up by that time.
Thank you so much. All right, if we can go to Administration Staff.
Good evening. I'm Robin Welsh, Director of Government Relations, Compliance and Procedures.
Good evening, Kira Libby, Director of Strategic Initiatives, and I have Dr. Jackson, Dr. Wait with me. They're my project managers.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Good evening, everyone. Raveldi Fitzpatrick, Director of Prince George's County Board of Education. Thank you all so much for watching and for joining and your public comments.
Ms. Adlin.
Cindy Adlin, Board Office Secretary and Assistant to the Policy and Governance Committee.
And Mr. Woodley.
Mr. Briggs, if I may. Sorry, I didn't raise my hand. Oh, I'm so sorry, Mr. Woodley.
Go ahead, Madam Vice Chair.
Can we do the introduction? And then can we do the introduction first? Sorry.
Good evening, everyone. Dennis Woodley, the Third Law Offices of Shipley and Horn, and we are Board Counsel.
Great, thank you so much. And want to recognize Vice Chair Walker.
Thank you. My fault, Mr. Woodley. I couldn't hear with all this background. Um, I just wanted to let you know to Chair Briggs that I will be heading to the same meeting, just as a heads up. I know you'll look forward.
Okay, great. Well, I think we can try to, if we all know that we have like a finite amount of time, we can try to get through everything quickly. And so we're going to move on to item one point three, Adoption of the Meeting Agenda. So colleagues, before I call for a motion to accept the agenda for tonight, please be aware that one new policy executive session was taken off the agenda to give the administration additional time for review. So may I have a motion to adopt the March twelfth, two thousand twenty four Policy and Governance Committee meeting agenda as amended?
So move, Mr. Chair.
Now second it, Lolita.
Great. So moving to second it. Any objections? Hearing none, the motion passes. The March twelfth, two thousand twenty four Policy and Governance Committee meeting agenda is adopted as amended. We're going to move on to item one point four, Approval of the Committee Meeting Minutes. May I have a motion to approve the February twenty seventh, two thousand twenty three, four Policy and Governance Committee meeting minutes?
So move, Lolita.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is it moved and seconded? Any objections? Hearing none, the motion passes. The February twenty seventh, two thousand twenty four Policy and Governance Committee meeting minutes are approved. We're now going to move on to item two point O, Public Comment on Agenda and Non-Agenda Items. Registered Public Comment Speakers can be live, pre-recorded, using video, audio, or written. As of this time, there are no registered public comment speakers this evening. But again, I want to just say that if you're viewing and you, you know, think you might want to say something, or you have an opinion, or maybe you feel like, you know, it's not well articulated, we welcome you sharing your thoughts because it really helps us as a committee and as a board members to shape policy, which is one of the most essential things we do. So want to add that. Before I move on to item three point O, want to recognize Vice Chair Walker.
Thank you so much. Let me come on camera. So one of the things that I had heard, not necessarily about this committee, but some of our public don't quite know how to sign up for the public comment. And so maybe I'm just putting that out there that we can do like a just a blast about how to do that on our P G C Board of Education website. We can make, maybe make a recommendation for that from our committee. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you so much for that, Vice Chair Walker. We also have this amazing, this is both Mrs. Welsh and also Ms. McRae, Shelby McRae, who has a legislative newsletter that goes out. And so I think we can include that in there is what I'm getting at. It was a long way of saying that. So I'm going to move on now to legislative updates. Uh, this is item three point one, May legislative committee meeting updates. Um, and Mrs. Welsh, I'm going to turn to you to just share more. I feel like this kind of us ping ponging, me sharing something that you're likely going to share, and you'll do it better because you do this work every day. Um, so I'm going to, I'm going to turn it over to you for the May legislative committee meeting updates. If you have anything you'd like to share from our meeting on Monday.
Okay, Cindy, can you post that for me, please? And I will try to do it as quickly as possible. So, so the first bill that they spoke about, and it's probably one of the, one of the most critical bills, has to do with the county boards of added budgets notice transparency in education spending. So the, and the big issue here is the, the outward purpose of the bill is for transparency in Board of Ed spending during the school year. However, there's a, a piece in the bill that talks about the fact that one percent, if there's a change in one percent from one category to the next, that one percent of that category's amount, and you move that to another category, it must go to the county for approval. And in essence, what it's doing is, is basically allowing the county to be in sort of in control of the budget by because for a county like us, that's very large, and it's quite easy. I mean, one percent is nothing. So we would be easily, you know, be taking things to the county council all the time to get their approval to change. So they're, they made, and we have this in our legislative exchange, we said fifteen percent that we, you know, we'd like to go with fifteen percent and Mabe and Mako came back with only three percent. And so I think they were back and forth on, and Jonathan, this time I may have to rely on you also. They were back and forth on when they were going, how much it was going to, they would seek in the amendment. Didn't they stop at, I heard five, then I heard ten, and I thought they stopped at ten. The proposal was ten percent.
Yes, well, the, the Maryland Association of Counties, I believe, Mako responded with a three percent negotiated agreement. And, and I think internally, the group said that ten percent seems the most reasonable. But the goal was to kind of start at fifteen percent and work down to ten percent as kind of the overall.
And then if you scroll down, and so this is a really, that's an important bill that, and I think it's already had its hearing on the on the, on the House side, but it's got, once it switches over, it is an opportunity to definitely take advantage of in terms of responding at the hearing as well as as actually even putting something in writing. There's a raised hand, I see.
Before we go to, they want, oh, yeah, I just wanted to say, because you might be asking this question. And I wanted to mention that Mabe did call, Robin, you probably remember this, and they called for any examples from school or school districts budgets around a category, category that's small, that's in a good example, and that they can use, and we can send that along to Mabe and also to other members of Mabe. So that's something that we can reach out to our superintendent about to do some advocacy around this issue.
Right. So I, I mean, the session isn't over. So I think this is a very important one. We want to get behind and, 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 you know, give our comments in.
Would you, Mrs. Welsh, would you like to answer questions at the end, or do you want to just kind of like ad hoc answer questions as we're kind of going through the presentation?
If it's, if we're talking about specific bills, I don't mind answering them as we go. That way we're, we're right on the bill.
Okay, well, I'm going to just turn it over to you for this section. So recognizing Vice Chair Walker.
Thank you, because if I have to hold my comments, I will never remember them. So thank you, Ms. Welsh. I guess my question for this is really about to Chair Briggs is because we know how important this one is here, can we, whether it's offline or not, just determine who's going to be there so that we can talk to this bill specifically? I know that when it went to appropriations, we weren't there, which is okay, but I would be because of the essence of this, I would love to at least have a sign up from our committee to be able to go if it's not from the administration side. It looks like this is where we really should be at. And I know it went through the Appropriations Committee already.
Yeah, I would say a few things strategically, and Mrs. Welsh, feel free to chime in. I think this is kind of one of those Tetris maps, like strategically, we want to make sure that whatever Mabe is negotiating yet, when we're going and we're doing our things, we're aligned with that. So if the they haven't come to a specific percentage and we're there saying something very different, it may not help us. I think broadly, if we just want to speak to the impact of this and do that advocacy, then we could do that. And we could also really get that, that example over to Mabe's committee that they requested from school districts. But Mrs. Welsh, do you have a second opinion there?
No, I, I, I think we, I mean, I, I think it's one of those things that, well, not all the counties are agreeing though with Mabe. I will say Howard and Baltimore City said they're, they don't, they want it out. They do not want to have any language in there that talks about having to get approval from, there's some soft language they take, but not that, that language. But I do think that especially if they're moving for ten percent, I think we probably should try to attempt to support that. Just because I, if they, if they went up to three percent, I don't know that you're gonna, you know, I don't think it matters that we say fifteen percent, but I think it's helps to be in line with Mabe in this one.
Yeah. The other thing I would say to Mrs. Welsh's point, to just bear numbers in the public, is that that ten percent, that may be the cap. So it's like, if you, you can't go above ten percent. But right now with the language that Mrs. Welsh mentioned, the one percent is very soft. And so it's like school districts can take steps to go beyond that amount and apologize later. So that, that could potentially be more than ten percent, right? It could be more than fifteen percent. But when we have that hard language at ten percent, then that means that you cannot go above that point. So there are some counties that see benefit to having the softer language at the one percent because it may not put any restrictions. It may allow for more flexibility than, than the ten, the hard ten percent.
Yeah, and as I just close out my thought on this one here, I appreciate you guys' input. I guess where I am is that we are a separate governing body, and I'm so with you, with alignment with Mabe, but we have about three members who sit on Mabe. And I think that we can have those discussions offline or invite them here to talk about the bills that we feel as though we're impacted for, so that we can be in a readily, like appropriate position to be able to talk on behalf of P G C P S. So that's what I wanted to say. Like, they don't speak on behalf of us. It's great to be aligned, but if we need information from them, then we should invite them to this meeting or representative, or use the three people from our board that have interactions with them to really talk through these, so we could just be clear on it. That's it. Thank you. Appreciate it.
And a board member, Walker, I think one of the things that I can do is that see who's, which of our delegates, they probably all are behind this bill, but if we put some language together, then anyone talking to any delegate right now could be having conversations to get them to be thinking in terms of what that means for us. So.
Yeah, when I was asked about it, I was asked by two folks, I literally used our wonderful tracker to the right-hand side and copied and pasted that back to them. And so I just wanted to say thank you so much for the language inside the tracker. That's really helpful. But if there's things that we might not be aligned on with Mabe, then understanding that, and then at least doing our due diligence to dive in, and I promise, that's it. I'm all in. But I do want to know who's going to be at the hearing. I do think it's appropriate, and if it's a day I can go, I'm happy to be there.
Okay, great.
Robin, and just to close the loop on this, so we can move forward, is I think there's two paths that I hear, right? Which is one, we can take the really proactive measure of just saying something that really impacts a school district. And then if it happens to be that we have like alignment that exists too, then that's even better. So either way, I think we can provide talking points that are either general or specific for that, that, that hearing.
And then let's scroll down so we can hit the next bill. I do want to say that they, this were, this was Mabe's priority bills right now in the session. So these are ones I think are critical bills for, you know, for school systems. So I'm going to scroll down to the, to the next, not to the non-recurring cost exclusion, which we would oppose that also, but taking a little bit further down to the next one, which has to do with financial audits, annual audits. So this one's saying that if we get audited and we have findings that are Cindy, go back up a minute. You're going way too fast. I'm sorry. Uh, right there, the House Bill seven sixty. If we, if we, if we have findings in our audits that are repeat findings, then this is requiring, initially, the language said that there'd have to be another audit within a certain timeframe that we see whether or not we had improved. But now instead, it's saying that you would have to address the repeat findings and recommendations from the auditor, and you would have to put this on your website. So actually, when Dr. Golson was here and we had the legislative audit, and that was five, six years ago, she actually did that. She listed out every repeat finding, and she put down our actions and when we had finally addressed every single thing and made all the corrections. So they, they're maybe supporting it with amendments, and we would support it. I did talk to Michelle Winston because that's sort of how we handle anytime we get audit reports and findings back because we want to get, get those addressed immediately. So we do take care of that. And then if we scroll down further to get you a number, House Bill five five eight. There you go. So this is a curriculum bill, and it has to do with primary, secondary health education framework. And I don't know if you remember from last year, there was a bill that caused a lot of havoc. And actually, the state superintendent was behind it, but the State Board of Education wasn't behind it, and it had to do with setting up this whole health of education framework, and then being able to opt out certain pieces, parts of the, of the curriculum, parents could opt out and everything. This is a bill that Mabe opposes. We oppose it also mainly because it is, it is a unfunded curriculum mandate, and it would cost us a good amount of money to make all the changes that they're requesting in the curriculum. And the same with the one below. And this one's a hard one because it has to do with anti-hate and Holocaust education. But again, we're back to where they are mandating curriculum, and it is unfunded mandate. So those are two that we would, would oppose. And then if you continue further down. Cindy, okay. And this one, we did talk about previously where we do support with amendments, that we definitely want to make sure students who are blind or visually impaired get their textbooks and Braille in time for the school year, the next year. Uh, we did have concerns and ask for an amendment because of the timeline, and I think most of the school systems feel the same way. It would be very difficult to get the information to them to get the books Braille by January one of, of any school year. Um, so that, that was the concern of having more flexibility in that arena. I think the people who wrote the bill, though, are very, much more concerned about the fact that if you put too much flexibility, then you're not in compliance, and then the students are without their books. So it's sort of a six of one, half dozen of the other. And then if we move forward to the school libraries, is how.
I have a question about that one right there, the Braille books, before we go forward. Is that okay? Okay. Real quick, is, do we know an estimated timeline? So they want January, are we saying like April or June? Do we have an estimated, like, gap? I'm asking because that might be a question.
So we, ideally, it would be, it would be great if it could be closer to the end of the year, like April or May, something like there. And the reason mainly is for students who are picking, like, say they're picking their pathway, and they're moving from eighth to ninth grade, or they're changing pathways, or sometimes those decisions aren't made to very, to really close to the end of that, of the school year prior to the next year. And so we don't want to be out there ordering all these books, and then, and then we have changes in what is needed. And it's that disability group, blind and visually impaired, that's a low incidence group, but still, we want to do whatever we can to be able to you know, want to meet that requirement. I think it's critically important. It's really bad when students who, I mean, I've been, when I worked in another county, it's bad when the students don't have their Braille materials. It's, it's very bad. So I understand where they're coming from. Probably even just a couple of months leeway would be extremely helpful.
Thank you. I just think it might be helpful for us to say, you know, September or whatever month that, you know, September's after the holiday. I mean, I'm sorry, the, the break. And so if we had timing to put in there or, or, or window, maybe September through December, whatever it is, it looks like solutions focused for the amendment. Um, that would just be my recommendation or proposal to you for consideration.
Okay, I will, I can check on that with our special ed department, see what, what they, what their recommendation would be. And then the next one, which is pretty complicated, this bill, I mean, I don't know that it's very complicated, but it's the whole issue of the library, the state agency for the library, Maryland State Libraries Agency, and they want to basically mandate how public schools there will run their libraries and how they'll determine which books and those kinds of things. And there's been numerous amendments at this point, and I personally, I have to say, I really would prefer to have an opportunity to read that in more detail since they made those changes before making a statement one way or the other. But we do have that we support with amendments in our tracker. Um, and then if you proceed a little bit further, this one is a priority bill for them also, which we have talked about, and that is access to attorneys and advocates and consultants for special ed programs and and funds, a support with amendments, and we, that's our same position too. And mainly, it's because we want to make sure that they define what is an advocate, they actually provide adequate training for advocates and consultants. Because it can be very problematic if someone thinks they're going to advocate or be a consultant for a parent of a child with a disability, and then they don't really know what they're doing. It can really end up complicating an I E P meeting and actually taking the parent further away from what they really want to get for their child. So those requirements that they're asking for, I think, are critically important if they move this bill forward. But it does provide the opportunity, if you're in a certain, you're, you're, the how much income your family makes in a year, if you fall within that group, it does open the door for some, that you can get some advocacy at that is free, which is, is very important for students with disabilities, for the parents of those students when they, especially when they can't afford legal help. So, so it's an important bill. And then the other bill, they, we don't have this, we're not tracking, but this is one that I would recommend, and we put it onto the tracker, is House Bill twelve thirty seven. So Maryland, the MSD has this online I E P system, and it's pretty convoluted. It takes a lot of work to get through it and everything. And so the, the, they are recommending that they, the MSD come through and do a study on the online I E P system and come up with a better system, which I think would be very helpful for special education. I bet it would save them a lot of time and money. And then if we continue forward to, I'm going to try to go a little bit faster. The House Bill twelve eighty seven, which has to do with state and county superintendents employment contracts and school leadership course of programs, which is, I think it's the next page. Oh, here it is. Thank you. So they did get an amendment to that one, and it says that the bill, where the beginning part, it says this bill requires that beginning July one, two thousand twenty four, the initial employment contract of a state or local superintendent school must include provision requiring a superintendent to complete school leadership course of program during the term of the contract. That they had, they did get that out. That was an amendment that was taken out of that bill. So they would, they would be offering these courses for superintents and anyone actually in a leadership position. But it would, and it would be in alignment, collaboration with like the A I, A I B, the A I B, and then MSD, but it wouldn't be necessarily a requirement in the contract of the superintendent. And then I'll take you a little bit, this will keep moving, because I know we're going faster. Let's see. Uh, one bill, House Bill, if, this is on page eight, House Bill eleven seventy five, public school employers and employees subcontracting for services. This one's really an important bill. Again, this is one that we would, might want to, as it's moving through the rest of this session, provide testimony to, we oppose it because it does limit our ability to some, to contract for people with, like Sarah, speech pathologists, A T, P T psychologists. And that's critically important because of the fact that we, we depend on those contracted services to be able to provide services to our students with disabilities. And if, in fact, we were limited in being able to do that, it would, it definitely would impact our ability to provide the appropriate services for those students. And student health, the House Senate Bill one eighty, House Bill eighty six, this is one that we oppose, and so does Mabe. And again, is a part of the issue is definitely, it's an unfunded mandate. Previously, we, we did have the F N F R M was available, the Health Department provided that through grants, and now we don't have that, and so they're not able to provide that. So the requirements here would actually be quite expensive for us. And I think it's on our, on our tracker that talks about how much it would cost if we were to have to go through that. And then if you continue, let's see what else, if there's anything else. This, the transportation with, oh, the transportation with seatbelts, that's a whole nother one. I think Mabe has support with amendments because, you know, you talk about safety, and that's important, but at this point in time, the cost would be prohibitive. Down the road, as we get more electric seat, electric buses, the seatbelts will come with them. But to actually, the requirement, I think, is by two, twenty twenty six, then you'd have to install the seatbelts even in your current buses. And there could be a liability issue also because it could throw the bus off from whatever that you, that, because it was never meant to be torn, the bus torn apart and seatbelts added. So that one, we do have a pose on that one. And then the next one, House Bill three fifty six. So this is, has to do with the getting a first violation that's on the on the, the, on the buses, the camera picks it up. And this is actually specific to Montgomery County. However, I did address this with our Director of Security and Safety related to what does that mean for us in Prince George's County. And although it doesn't impact us at this point, he recommends strongly we oppose it because we do not want them, the legislators mandating what it is that we, I guess evidently, in Prince George's County, the police actually provide both file, they will give, you can actually get a citation or you can get a warning. Uh, and Prince, and in Montgomery County, this bill is saying the first time, no matter what the incident is, it would have to be a warning. And this is, and so it depends, you know, when you think about situations where people pass, stop the school buses because they're stopped to pick up students, depending on what they do, it could be very serious, and they should receive a citation because you're really putting the risk of safety for student, you're putting student safety at risk. So we're, we do oppose that as well, as so does Mabe does. And then and I think that at this point, that is about the, the, the most, I don't want to keep going over all these, but I think that's basically it for the Mabe update.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Welsh. I mean, as you already know, and I think as the public gets like, this is, there's a laundry list of bills. So we picked the ones I think that were most salient for this discussion, and appreciate you being concise and kind of getting that down, and that's a hard thing to do to make cuts. So we're going to move to three point two Blueprint Implementation Update, and that's why we've invited Dr. Kira Libby, who'll provide the committee with Blueprint Implementation Plan Updates. So I'll turn it over to you, Dr. Libby.
Thank you. We're just going to do a quick update for you. And we do have a PowerPoint. Thank you. So this is a update for Blueprint for Maryland's Future, so you know where we are currently and what is required of us for this school year. And again, I have Dr. Jackson, Dr. Wait with me, my project managers. And Dr. Jackson is going to give a quick background, starting on slide three, just so everyone knows why we have Blueprint for Maryland's Future. Dr. Jackson.
Good evening. So as a result of Maryland no longer outpacing the national average, a committee of educators collaborated to find out how the state of Maryland could do a better job of preparing students for post-graduation pathways. And we now have the blueprint, which is law. So the next slide will show us the five policy areas of Blueprint. These are the overarching pieces that form the policy. Pillow, and you'll often hear them referred to as pillars. So pillar one deals with early childhood education. One of the things I want to point out there is that this increases seats for three and four-year-olds who are eligible. Pillar two is the high quality and diverse teachers and leaders. Uh, there are several initiatives in this one, but I would like to point out that there'll be more targeted professional development to prepare teachers. And we now have a career ladder that will be implemented because of pillar two. Pillar three deals with college and career readiness. I know that this is something that we have been talking about for years. But with this pillar comes along career counseling, which will start in middle school, just so students can be better prepared as they approach high school to make decisions about post-graduation pathways. Along with that, we are expanding pathways. Dual enrollment is expanded, and A P classes, we're expanding it, so there's better access to all students. Dual enrollment is expanded and AP classes, we're expanding it. So there's better access to all students. Pillar four provides resources for all students and a couple of highlights here are the enhanced and expanded mental health services in Prince George's County. Public schools, along with community schools that offer a wraparound services. And then finally, pillar five, this piece kind of governs and monitors what's happening. So as we go to the next slide, you'll see a better example. This will give you a visual of how these pillars work together. You'll notice on the top, the top says pillar five, because again, it pillar five monitors what's happening. And then pillars one, two, three and four actually come together to uplift pillar three as the ultimate goal. And we know that our goal here, we know that students are our business. So the ultimate goal is just to make sure that students graduate ready to be globally competitive. Okay, we are going to move to the next slide.
Thank you. And this is just our timeline for this year, just so we stay on track. And another slide, we're going to talk about, we have two due dates this year to the A I B. One is this Friday, March fifteenth, and the other one is May first. But we've had listening sessions with various stakeholder groups, we presented to cabinet. Thank you, Board of Education for contributing to our response that's due by this Friday. And again, everything is due by May first this year. Next slide, please. And Robin already mentioned the A I B. So this is the A I B. This is the, the state. Governance Board that's overseeing blueprint across the state of Maryland. They collaborate, collaborate with MSD to give us guidance and direction. And I just want to point out that Mr. Robinson is on the A I B and he is a mathematics teacher and coach from Prince George's County Public Schools. He is the only K twelve educator on the A I B. And yes, we do use him for our internal blueprint plan. Next slide. So as I mentioned, this year we had listening sessions with parents, students, school-based administrators. Principals, assistant principals, teachers, PGCEA, central office staff, community members. Community partners, because we wanted to make sure that we had all voices in our blueprint plan as we did last school year. So we listened, we asked, what do we need, what do we need, what do we need to change? How can you give us input? How can you participate? And we had those listening sessions from November until recently January. And we also are using all of these stakeholder groups to be writers and reviewers of our blueprint plan for this school year. Next slide. So last school year, we had one plan that was due by March fifteenth that was about two hundred pages. This year, the A I B has been a little nice to us and we are now submitting in two parts. Part one are the systemic questions that we again received input from all of those various stakeholder groups and the Board of Education. And we are this today, tomorrow finalizing those questions to submit either on or by this Friday, March fifteenth. And then part two is we have per, per pillar questions. That we have to submit by May first. And we have the pillar teams working on those responses right now. And we'll try to have all of that completed after spring break.
All right. So the next few slides give an overview of the systemic response that we plan to submit on Friday or. Either before Friday or on that date. I feel like we're going to be able to do it prior to the due date. As Dr. Libby mentioned, there is a systemic response and it is divided into five questions. So based on our listening sessions and just us soliciting feedback from different stakeholder groups. This is the summary of what we have so far. This question is asking how well blueprint aligns to district program and what we have already in place. And based on our responses. Stakeholders agree that we are pretty well aligned. We have a strategic plan in Prince George's County Public Schools that has been in place. And those, the goals there definitely align to blueprint, but we also have other systemic programming that aligns to blueprint. And as you can see here, and you'll have more time on your own to look and see how the blueprint. Aligns across the district. So the next slide focuses on question, the results for question two. How are we communicating this? We know that blueprint is a massive plan. There may be some miscommunication out there. People may be hearing different things. So we are making sure that we're having a, a messaging. That is system-wide that everyone can understand. And the way to do that is to point everyone to our website. Strategic Initiatives Office does have a website. And we are using that as our base. However, as mentioned by Dr. Libby, we have had listening sessions just to make sure that we understand what people. What ideas people have about blueprint and then we are trying to make sure that aligns to what the goals really are. So between November twenty twenty three and January twenty twenty four, we have had listening sessions. To better get ideas about how communication can be broadly messaged correctly for blueprint. Moving to the next slide, question three, ask us about our successful changes. So Blueprint has several mandates and Prince George's County Public Schools. Is required to just put some strategies in place to make sure that we adhere to that. We have done a really good job with trying to make sure that we are either, that we're hitting the mark or either above it. And I'll just highlight two things here. So the first one for letter A. We have something called the Science of Reading that is coming from the state of Maryland. But in Prince George's County Public Schools, our goal is to make sure that every single teacher and administrator. That supports pre-K through grade three, those staff members will be trained by June. If we don't, for some reason, meet that mark by June, we will continue to train throughout the summer. The other one I want to highlight is H at the bottom. G and H. So with pillar four, which provides more resources for students. Prince George's County Public Schools is doing a really good job of making sure that we are enhancing and expanding support for students. Who do not speak English as their first language. One immediate change is calling those families or the, the students in those families multilingual learners. It's more of an asset-based approach. And then of course, we are increasing support for students with disabilities. So the next slide looks at some challenges. We know that because there are some mandates and some of them are unfunded. There are some challenges that we're facing along with other county, other counties in Maryland. The first one, of course, deals with, you know, just funding. This is a massive plan and funding is one of our challenges. The other two, you can see there on your screen. Communicating the correct message and then of course recruiting and retaining highly qualified teachers, but I believe that that is a national challenge. So as we go to slide five. This slide asks all of the counties how we're going to monitor and kind of look at the progress. I can honestly say that our leadership is still deciding, you know. Deciding on ways that would be most efficient for this, but based on the, the listening sessions and based on the feedback that we've received. These are just some ways that are listed here. To summarize it all up, we will definitely continue to gather feedback and adjust as needed. In terms of how we can best monitor the progress, Prince George's County Public Schools does have several dashboards with data. So that is one way we continue, we can continue to, you know, use those dashboards to see how these programs and initiatives are progressing. And we can go to the next slide.
And so you may say, where's all this summary? It's in our draft plan that's due by this Friday. And you could click on the link and read the draft plan at your leisure, leisure, whenever you have time. And if you have any input, just let us know after spring break. You know, prior to April twentieth or so, because we will incorporate this in our. Final plan that's due by May first. And that's our presentation. And, oh, I'm sorry, the next slide is the websites that Dr. Jackson's already mentioned. Websites to MSD, A I B, and of course, our wonderful website that the board. Has already told the public to go to and look for information and we truly appreciate that. Now we can go to questions.
Recognizing Vice Chair Walker.
Hey there. Thank you so much for this information. I was hoping that if, if it's not already available, that we could get this deck, if that's okay. The first two slides in, in particular, I'm really interested in. I think that those are good talking points for us. At least for me, I would love to put that inside of my newsletter. Those have been at least some questions that have been asked about the blueprint. And I think you guys did a great job at connecting the. The, the pillars. So thank you for that. Also, with that, I guess my other question is, there were, I, I can re-watch this, but there were a couple of key bullet points that you listed. As you went through the first two slides and it would be great to kind of just put those, you probably just know them by heart. Because you look at them so much, but if you could just put that in an email, at least to me, that would be great. Because those are really, really good. So thank you so much for all you guys' work.
Will do.
Great. Colleagues, are there other questions? Right. Well, Dr. Libby and team, I want to say thank you so much for joining this evening, because you're going to share the supplemental materials with us. I will hold any questions that I have for a direct email or something along those lines. And appreciate you all taking time out of your busy schedule to, one, put this together and two, to present this to us. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're going to move to item three point three legislative update. And Mrs. Welsh. I'll move, I'll turn to you if you have anything else to share about the House bills that you haven't already shared.
I'm just going to add, I just talked a couple minutes on a couple of them that we just recently added. That actually, Board Member Business Brother also asked us to, to relook at. So if you scroll down, the, well, the first one, House Bill four zero seven. That's, that's, she didn't ask us to look at this one, but this bill has to do with it. If you are a student. That is enrolled in a higher education institution for fifteen credit hours. And depending on the, you know, your total, your family's income and everything, you could be eligible for SNAP, which provides food supplement benefits. And so I did check with our academic office and we have quite a few students who are actually carrying. Fifteen credits of higher ed in a school year, which is pretty significant. And so I think this is an important bill to support, just because you never know any, if any of those students. You know, depending on their family situation, could really benefit from having the opportunity to access SNAP. So that one we have as support. And then I already talked to you about seven sixty. If you scroll down, Cindy, the one on House Bill thirteen eighteen, this is, scroll back up, please. It's, it's in red, right there. Yes. That one, House Bill thirteen eighteen, as well as House Bill fifty six, I mean Senate Bill fifty six. Both of those bills, it's right in the fine print, but it does talk about the fact that they have included MSD and the ability to issue. Grants to help with food waste and composting grant programs. So this, I did talk to our recycling technician and she said both of these bills actually would be, or something, so we should support. Because they're definitely in support of our, our, our climate action plan, a priority six waste reduction goals. And it would be enabled to access some money through a grant would be really helpful in terms of reducing food waste and overall waste. So, and these were two bills that. Board Member Business Brother asked us to look into. So we did put them on the support list. And then if you scroll down, oh, and then we do have about House Bill thirteen ninety four. And that would be to put a suicide crisis lifeline telephone number on the students, their badge, their ID badge. So if ever they were in a situation, they could, and they were at that point where they didn't know what they were going to do because they were so desperate. That it would be right there that they could make a phone call and, you know, access help. So that I think is really important in our platform. We talk about. Student safety as a priority for PGCS. So we did put that one down as support also. And then if you scroll down a little bit further, Cindy. Again, this was just the, the House Bill version of the one I just spoke to you about and then scroll down further. Okay, let me see. Okay, so House Bill three sixty four. And this is the one that I. This has to do with, that if you have a violation, like at a traffic light or whatever, that you should be fined. Forty dollars. And so I'm, I'd be in light of what happened at our one school where two of our students were, you know, killed. Because of a car accident and they were doing, walking across, going across crosswalk at an intersection. This, and again, this is one that actually Board Member Business Brother brought to our attention. This one is one that. We do support, but we feel it really should be support. I think it's a support with amendments because of the fact that. Forty dollars is not a heck of a lot of money to pay for having a, an intersection violation and that it really, the fine should be. Depending on how, how severe the violation is, the fine should be then increased to, to reflect the seriousness of the. Of the violations. So we have that as support with amendments. And then if you scroll down further. Cindy, you should be able to see. Okay, this is again support with amendment. We did talk about this one already and we had talked previously about the Medicaid ones. We'll scroll down further. Poses, okay. We just talked about, oh, actually that is, I, that need, we got to move that because that supports with amendments. We do support transparency. We don't support control over one percent of, of a category in the budget. Let's scroll down a little bit further, please. So this one, Senate Bill two hundred, and this is for Prince George's County and it has to do with construction. Of sidewalks and crosswalks and safe alternative routes to public schools. So it, so we do, in a sense, we support it because of safety, but the cost would be astronomical. I did, again, spoke with our Director of Safety and Security Services. And he recommended strongly that, that this should be that bill, and this might be somewhat something to have a conversation about actually. But that bill should actually be amended to state that the, that the actual, like Department of Public Works or whatever would take on the responsibility of identifying. Which walkways and which sidewalks are safe. He said that usually you end up having to have a traffic, you would have to, we would have to contract with a traffic safety engineering firm. To conduct the research and provide the information, because they look at traffic light timing, accident, traffic flow, pedestrian traffic. And all these different factors to determine whether or not sidewalks and traffic signals are, are, everything is appropriate. And this is often the Department of Public Works and a lot of county governments, that's the work that they're involved in. That's just the things they do. So his recommendation was that we make an amendment that would, I mean, we suggest an amendment that would actually. Put the responsibility on the, on the county, the Department of Public Works to be able to, to do something like that. And they did, they, I know like Montgomery County, they provided some fiscal information. And it was actually, I mean, we're talking millions and millions of dollars that cost would be for them to be able to study all their crosswalks and their sidewalks. So. This would be one, I think, that might be valuable to have a, you know, to further later have a conversation with the delegates. And then if you scroll, and senators actually, so scroll down further. School bus, we just talked about that and the, with the Mabe stuff and we scrolled down further. Oh, can I go back to that one? Because this is an important one also that, that has to do with Montgomery County. Go further up. But it has to do with this whole idea of, right there, House Bill three fifty six, of not giving a, not giving. A citation. So the, the, how much of the, just, just as background information, how the buses, the cameras on the buses are funded. are funded through the money that is also received through the citations that are given out for people who are not paying attention and are driving, you know, dri, uh, just passing school buses as, as the bus is stopping to either pick students up or dropping them off. And so it is actually, uh, even though this is specifically Montgomery County, it is very, it really reverses where a lot of Maryland community, communities have worked really hard to reduce illegal passings around stop school buses. Um, and our Director of Transportation is very concerned because they feel that she, he feels like this would endanger more students and being hit by speeding vehicles who casually break the law, especially in our most vulnerable neighborhoods. So I don't know, this is something maybe we want to have a further conversation about, just to, just, it doesn't ever hurt to express our viewpoint on it. Uh, in terms of, of um, what that would mean for safety for our students. And I do know a lot of the other counties are, are pretty much in an uproar about this one too. So if you can scroll down Cindy, we're almost done. Um, let's see. Um, this one has to do with, um, this was a, we opposed this, this had to do with again, a CTE program that had to do with driving. And actually, the reality is, is that this, first of all, earning a CDL license would not meet the criteria that you need to have for the CTE. CTE has, has this criteria measuring high demand, high skill and high weight. And so it, number one, it uh, it would not be uh, I mean, yes, it's good to be able to drive and do jobs that may be required driving, but in terms of looking at it for a pathway to meet CTE criteria, it, it's, they feel strongly, it would not meet that at all. And then Senate Bill one twelve, that has to do with a policy about students' cellular phone use, and we already have a policy, but more importantly is again, litig, it is um, um, let it, um, I keep wanting to say litigation, that's not it, legislation that um, is uh, is taking over the responsibility of the school board. Because the school board is with the, has the authority to develop policies. So we don't want legislators telling us what, what policies um, should be developed when this, that's the job of the school board. And then if you scroll down further. Let's see, um, this, this one, um, seven sixty-two. And we say seven sixty-two and nine eighty, both of those ha, again, are unfunded curricular mandates and they really do eliminate superintendents and boards authority in that arena. And will cost us uh, uh, depending on like the computer science one would cost us nine million dollars for the first year. So that's very expensive. And then um, uh, we, uh, the reason we oppose Senate Bill five twelve, which has to prohibit a ba, behavior on school grounds and property application is because it's a, it's an unfunded mandate that we would have to be requir, required to provide these major report incidents to MSD. Um, which we um, um, which we are already doing a lot of reporting, but then we'd be providing more reports. So that is, it's a burden on the school system to be able to do that. And then for cybersecurity, we actually have all the things in place, I think from our last incident, they've put in um, a lot of uh, safeguards to ensure that um, we don't run into cybersecurity issues as we had before. So in this instance, our IT department felt that this should not be something that we support. And then we already talked about ten fifty-eight, if you can scroll down further. Keep going. And that's it. And um, I, I was, I would also say, just as a, a, another bill as an aside that we didn't discuss though, is that uh, we are supporting the study of feasibility for relocating Prince George's County Public School System Headquarters. Because the county is willing to pay the cost of the actual study and it's just the school system that would, uh, with the, you know, the board event that would be responsible for getting an independent consultant to, to conduct the study. So that would be another one. And I know we're rushing sort of tonight because everyone's leaving by seven, so I just want to say that if there's any bills that we went over or when you can pull this right off of the board docs and look at it, if there's any bills that you have questions, please send them to me and I can do some research and I'll be glad to um, follow up with anything that you might need. Uh, you know, in terms of your own advocacy for the school board.
Okay. Thank you so much, Mrs. Welsh. I mean, another clarification is that we meet weekly at this point, we go over bills that are coming up in the um, the, the, the next uh, uh, week's hearings. So we'll always get those things out to board members. And if there are ones that you have particular concerns about, like um, Board Member Business Brother has done, then send that along as well and we'll look into that. Um, and, and, and we'll move forward. So um, with that being said, we're gonna move to item four point O, items for discussion. There are five policies for discussion. Each uh, discussion round will last two and a half minutes. Um, so we're gonna go to four point one, Policy Service Animals in Schools. I yield the floor to Mrs. Welsh to provide the committee with an update on the new policy service animals in schools.
So this is a new policy and it um, it has to do with primarily dogs or miniature horses. Um, so if, if the policy itself, I think it reflects initially the policy statement, which is is very much in line with everything that we've talked about and that is in terms of providing equitable access to educational opportunities, rigorous resources and supports. No matter, no matter, in this instance, it, it, uh, regardless of what, if we have a disability or not, don't have a disability is our responsibility to ensure that you have access to, to that, the equal opportunities. And so this is providing guidelines for the use of service animals, for individuals with disabilities on our Prince George's County Public School property. And also school-related activities. So it does provide some definitions, it defines employee, it does define an individual with a disability. That definite definition comes from Americans with Disabilities Act. So it is, it is a very broad act. Um, it has, the, the act itself, the um, language in that bill, that law is pretty broad and inclusive of many individuals that could, of different types of disabilities. Um, and then we have information about service animals and the types of things that they would be um, doing. And it, it also does, uh, in specific circumstances, it could also include a trained miniature horse. So um, and so late, we have definitions there and then service animals in training. So if they are in the process of learning to be a service animal and the trainer is, uh, brings this the service animal on school property, probably with a student or whatever, so that gradually the stu, the, the dog and the student are able to operate efficiently in the school system, that is allowed also. So it basically is just giving you basic standards that says, as soon as individual with disabilities, and that's anyone too. I mean, it could be an employee, it could be a um, um, visitor, it could be a parent, you know, volunteer, contractor, whatever. They absolutely are per, permitted to be accompanied by a service animal. And if you can scroll down Cindy. And basic, oh, wait, a little too fast, go back up a little bit. Um, and so they are, they're basically the, the reason they would be bringing the animal onto school property would be if the animal's required because of the disability and the work and task the animal has been trained to perform. Um, they, if you have a disability and you need a service, a dog, let's say, to come to the school, though, you are not, we as a system cannot require you to provide documentation as proof that the animal's been certified, trained or licensed. Um, and then if you scroll down further. And then it talks about also that, so bringing a horse onto school property, a miniature horse could, could provide, could be challenging in some ways. And so this talks about the need for reasonable modifications to administrative procedures and practices. If it were necessary to bring a miniature horse um, uh, on school property by an individual that has a disability. Um, and so this sort of just lays out the types of considerations that would, and factors that it would need to be considered. And then if you scroll down further. And then it talks about fees. So if you have a, uh, let's say a student who has, let's say, a, a service animal, a dog or whatever, and they are, they are going, we, the school is going on a special trip or something. They, we, the, the dog itself cannot be charged a separate ticket or anything, that would be something the school system would, would uh, cover. And this, this all goes to basically ensuring that um, the um, any, a child or anyone with a disability in need of a service animal does have uh, equal access to uh, uh, any of the events or uh, opportunities that uh, everyone else has. And then this talks about liability. So the owner of a service eye animal is liable for any ar, harm or injury caused by service animals to students, employees, visitors and PGCPS property. And you know, it's a very fine line because you think about like, say, students who are in school that have allergies all the time, you know, have different allergies and stuff. And then if you need a student, need to bring a service animal. I can see how that can cause some conflict or whatever, but the law is pretty clear that the individual with a disability does have a right to bring the student, the, the uh, service animal with them. And then again, the care and supervision of the animal is the responsibility of the owner and the trainer. And Prince George's County is not responsible for the care or supervision. So scroll down further Cindy. And that is basically it. It says the superintendent is responsible for developing and administrative procedures, implement the policy to ensure that federal and state laws and regulations are followed. So that's it in a nutshell.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Welsh. The floor is now open for discussion. If you have questions or comments, please raise your hand and you will be recognized in the order of your hand. Hey, um, so colleagues, don't, not seeing any hands, uh, should this policy be brought forward for committee action or retained for further discussion? Okay, I think I heard brought forward for both. So um, and I agree with that. Mrs. Welsh, please take under advisement the recommendations made tonight by the Policy and Governance Committee on the new policy and um, uh, bring it back for further discussion at the next P and G meeting.
Uh, I'm sorry, did they say discussion or action?
For action, okay. And uh, Dr. Miller, were you saying for action or for further discussion?
Action.
Okay, got it. All right. So Mrs. Welsh, um, please take that under advisement, um, and uh, in my language to be uh, brought back, or brought for action. We're gonna move on to item four point two, Policy zero one one nine, Theory of Action. I yield the floor to Mrs. Welsh to provide the committee with an update on Policy zero one one nine, Theory of Action.
So um, the current policy we have on theory, theory of action actually is um, fairly old. I think it's, I wanna say it's from two thousand and eight. And it does reference like the Bridge to Excellent Master Plan. And so it's, it's, it's quite outdated, quite honestly. But the idea of theory of action is really about a plan, is about the out, like sort of laying out your plan of your steps moving forward of how you're going to implement uh, I, many times a strategic plan. So um, I, and this is, again, I put this together thinking this might be more functional than what's currently sitting in that, in that uh, policy. But I'm al, always open for suggestions and can certainly change or do anything that we need to with this. So what I did was I went to our strategic plan because that's in effect through twenty twenty-six. And it does, um, and it is the focus of it is absolutely equity. And so I talked about in the first, for the policy statement, the, the omission uh, for the Board of Ed in terms of the um, the strategic plan, which is to provide str, transformational educational experiences for all students. Anchored in excellence and equity, developing twenty-first century competencies, enabling each student unique brilliance to flourish until, in order to build empowered communities in a more inclusive, just world. And then I also went through, because the old, the old theory of action went to and then sort of went back to what were the values, the core values of the board back in two thousand and eight. So the strategic plan does lay out um, uh, core values. So then I talk about the fact that the board by having this policy is uh, addressing the theory of action, its commitment to the core values articulated in the twenty-one to twenty-six Prince George's County Public School Strategic Plan. And then I just went ahead and listed them out, so we know what they are. And that the, the board feels like these uh, core values are key to achieving equity and excellence in education. And then if you scroll down further, um, it says the purpose of this policy is to provide a framework that outlines what steps PGS must take to meet the desired outcomes of achieving equity, ex, and excellence in education. Cause that's the end goal. And that is really sort of the purpose of a theory of action. And even within the um, strategic plan, there is a section in there that actually talks about theory of action and the steps to move forward. So then if you go to the next page. Cindy, I have a couple definitions, it just talks about, and these are just references, uh, references to things that are in the policy right now. Benchmark goals, then cr, uh, critical success indicators, which we actually did talk about previously when we were talking about the data dashboards policy. Uh, and they have been uh, set up to, in order to monitor progress towards achieving our outcome goals established in the strategic, strategic plan. And then I do reference in the policy stakeholders, so I did define them. So then if you go through and you uh, look at the, at the standards, again, most of this is actually coming from the strategic plan. So this section in terms of the standards are addressing uh, from a theory of action uh, sta, standpoint. First of all, the superintendent shall identify a unique knowledge, skills, supports needed for students to be college, career and life engaged and, and to develop rigorous, accessible, aligned, standard-based curriculum to meet these needs. Um, I, I won't keep reading, but then the next one says the superintendent designated shall invest in continuous relevant professional development of educators. Providing instructional strategy supports growth-oriented feedback for implementation in the classroom to increase instructional effectiveness and improve student learning outcomes. And then it says Prince George's County Public Staff shall embrace a culture of organizational learning and hold themselves accountable through transparent and disciplined performance management that engages every level of PGCPS in a continuous cycle of data analysis, goal setting, action planning, executive and uh, mo, uh, exec, execution and monitoring to build capacity and to consistently strive for innovation, continuous learning and, and improvement. And I think the key here is truly that the continuous learning and the continuous improvement of what we're doing. And then if you scroll down further, it says the superintendent designated shall work to develop a culture in PGTPS that fosters cultural responsiveness and a sense of collective responsibility for student success amongst, among teachers, students, staff, families, communities, to deepen the understanding of students' needs and create a shared purpose of more effective instructional practices, increase learning. And then lastly, the student, uh, su, the superintendent shall focus the work of PGTPS on five strategic imperatives that shall guide the work of our PGTPS staff to desire outcomes of equity and excellence in education. So then these five that are listed here are, that were actually sitting right in the strategic plan. The first one has to do with academic innovation. Um, and then if you scroll down, um, uh, Cindy, I'll just list them for you. Um, keep going, please. Then the transformational workforce, uh, and really, and working hard to get highly competent workforce and culturally responsive employees. And then organizational learning culture, so that um, we're creating a learning and work environment that's collaborative and encourages critical thinking and problem solving. And then further down, the next one is safe and supportive environments that, um, and that is where, um, where the superintendent establishes safe environments for students and staff, which does foster an environment of cultural responsiveness, mutual respect and a focus of overall physical and psychological well-being of every PGTS student, family member and employee. And that's pretty broad when you think about it, because we're not just talking about fi, physical safety, we're talking about a student's comfort level when they're in school. Do, you know, not having to worry about being bullied, you know, or treated poorly during the day, but, you know, all the things that can really ruin it for a student when they're in school. So it's, it's very broad. Um, and then the next one is infrastructure and operational enhancements. And again, the superintendent designated is responsible for pro, providing students and staff with systems, facilities, technology, financial resources, organizational structures, support services that promote a positive learning and working environment. So again, it, this is pretty, it's big, it's pretty broad, it's lots of things that the strategic plan does address. And then I did include a section on accountability, which is, which we are very focused on. We now have our data dashboards that we're looking at and we do provide the information uh, through the um, because of these established critical success indicators. So that allows us to monitor on a regular basis, um, how close are we getting to achieving the outcome goals in the strategic plan? Um, and then um, looking at your baseline data and then even breaking it down into benchmark goals so that we can meet those, um, meet all the goals within the strategic plan. So then um, this, as far as implementation responsibilities, um, we already have a strategic plan, so I don't see a need for an administrative procedure. But what I say is this different, superintendent will implement this policy through the execution of the strategic plan. And then I also have that this policy will be review, reviewed and revised as necessary upon revision of the strategic plan. Because I, well, I don't think we want to have happen is that it sits there for how many years? Um, what, sixteen years or something? And um, it's talking about something that happened way back. And it's really, it's not addressing what we're doing right now. So I think when, like, say, when uh, it'll finish up on the school year twenty twenty-six, when they're working on the new strategic plan. And at, at that point, there might be other things we're focusing on too. and at, at that point, there might be other things we're focusing on too. We wanna make sure the theory of action that pu- this policy would then be addressing, uh, what this, that strategic plan would include. So that's why I included that language there also. So any questions?
Okay. All right. The floor is now open for discussion and comments. Any of your hands will be, uh, you will be recognized in the order of your race. Okay. Mrs. Welsh, I did have something, um, and it's probably better that I write these things down, because I think I forgot it. But I, I think it's here. Um, so I did wanna say something about relevance and also access. Um, one with access, I think you had something in there about stakeholders being able to engage, uh, to access. But something that I would like, um, to see is just like, you know, more intentional language around, um, the accessibility of information where it's posted, who can, you know.
Okay.
Yeah. So, um, that that's very, very clear for the public. Um, the other thing that I was thinking, um, as you were talking was like the, the, the uniqueness of the area that we're in. So, um, I'm thinking about Common Core and when it was rolled out, people pushed back because they said, hey, you know, what someone's teaching in Ohio may be very different from what someone might be teaching in Maryland, because, you know, the markets, the workforce, et cetera is different. Um, and, you know, you wanna ensure that when students are leaving, they're also prepared for the jobs that are kind of local and regional. Um, I, I would also wanna echo that too with, um, this policy is that it's reflective of the population that we have. So if there's anything that's missing in there, um, you know, where we can have additional protections, or if there's just specific needs that kind of work for this, uh, population of students, um, the surrounding area, um, we'll wanna just have that as a consideration. Um, I can get more specific. I hate kinda talking broadly about things, so I can do some research and kinda give back a, a specific recommendation, but that's what stood out to me for that policy.
Okay.
Are there other comments? Hey, colleagues, should this policy be brought forward for committee action or retained for further discussion?
Brought forward for committee action based on any research you said you wanted to do.
I second.
Second, okay. Mrs. Welsh, please take under advisement, uh, the recommendations made tonight by the Policy and Governance Committee on policy zero one one nine and, uh, bring it back for action at the next P and G meeting.
And you, and you're gonna send me any notes that you think, like, anything, I mean, you can, you don't have to. I took some notes, but if you would like to send me anything, you absolutely can. I'll be, I'll wait for those.
Yeah, I'll be ready to discuss on Friday when we have our check in.
Oh, perfect. Okay, that sounds great.
Um, so we're gonna move to item four point four, bylaw ninety two ten, chair. I yield the floor to Mrs. Welsh to provide the committee with an update on bylaw ninety two ten, chair.
So, um, at the last meeting, we had a conversation, I think it was, um, the biggest things, I just listened to that video again this evening, just to make sure I covered everything. One of the things that came up was like, uh, the question came up is what do other counties do as far as, uh, when the chair is uh, not, cannot be, can't continue to do the job and how do they end up replacing the, uh, chair or the vice chair? So Baltimore City and Montgomery County, they actually talk about the positions, but they don't really address the situation of there's, if the chair or the, uh, that position for the chair or the vice chair become vacant. But Antarctica County does, um, talk about that vacancy for the chair or vice, uh, chair that the remaining board members shall elect a replacement, uh, at the next regularly scheduled meeting. And Baltimore's County also says basically that any vacancies of the chair and the co-chair shall be filled uh, by an election at the next regularly scheduled meeting. Um, so there, that both those counties are talking about, uh, just running another election, even if it is like mid-year. Um, I did, if you go to the beginning as far as temporarily, I have, um, that, and this is again, based on the conversation we had, I did define, I mean, changed the definition temporarily or, or include a definition, I should say. It says a period of time that is one month or greater following a two week notice from the chair. Cause I did hear, um, I think, uh, board member Briggs, you talked about ma- like it shouldn't be um, that one month, you know, if you're gonna be out one month or longer than you, that we should replace the chair. And then there was conversation also about making sure that the chair provided two week notice. So I did include that, um, and certainly we can change that language if that's what you would like to do, but that, I did put that in. And then if you scroll down, I think the only other area we had conversation is, um, so we had, so that was hit, the E was there previously. It says the vice chair will assume the responsibility of the chair until the annual meeting in December, in which the election of for the chair will be held. Um, and then, then it says if the vice chair does not want to assume the responsibilities of the chair, then the board will elect a replacement for the chair. And it says in the event of the, uh, vacancy in the office of the vice chair, the remaining board members shall elect a replacement at the next regularly scheduled meeting of the board. So I kept that language, because if you scroll down further, Cindy, we, um, there had been conversation also about in the event of vacancy in the office of the vice chair, the chair will select a replacement for the vice chair position. And I think at your last meeting, you had all come to agreement that it would be better to have an election. So I did cross that out. So I think those are the, the major changes, um, that, uh, we had from our last meeting and, um, and, um, if there's no questions or you, or you're, you're satisfied with how it is, then I can send it over to the parliamentarian to look at. Cause I think he wants to see all the bylaw.
Oh, great. Right. We talked about that. Okay.
My, I can't raise my hand, so.
Oh, okay. Um, okay. Well, I will recognize you, Dr. Miller, and if there are others, um, please raise your hand. Okay.
Okay, I wanted to be very clear on, uh, the la- latter, um, statement that, um, uh, Welch gave in reference to what, uh, happens when, um, a vacancy occurs with the, uh, board chair. It is very clear that to the public now that there are all the appointed members will be, uh, leaving effective June thirtieth. And at that time, uh, I believe that we are in agreement that the chair would, uh, I mean, the vice chair would automatically move into the chair seat because of the, the situation where the board is confronted with in terms of the, um, term, I won't say, uh, well, termination of appoint, appointee, appointed members. And then, uh, the board will vote to, uh, select a vice cha- a vice chair temporarily. I'm just making sure I, this is what I understand the process is. And then in December, the board will go back to its, uh, process of electing both a chair and a vice chair at that time. Is that what I'm trying to understand?
That's what I understand, um, because the, because in the law, it says that for Prince George's County on the first Monday of December, you're supposed to have an annual meeting and that's where you would vote for your, uh, chair and your vice chair.
Okay.
Then I will say though, that you, that position, because the law did change, you'll bet those positions will be in place for two years.
So are you saying that, um, if the current vice chair moves into the chair seat in June or July first, that is, then, uh, the vice chair is in that seat for two years?
I didn't, I didn't, uh, respond to that. I merely was telling you that now, it, with, the way the law reads is that your annual meeting, when you're electing a chair and a co-chair, you're electing them to stay in their positions for two years. I don't know what you wanna do in this particular situation.
No, I understood, I, well, the two year part, I think that should come along with the election. Right now, with, uh, the board is in a, a temporary state. And you have an election in November, which may bring on two new board members or three. I don't know how many are up for reelection. But my point is that you may possibly have new members as opposed to some of the members returning. Whether they return or not, you still have an election of officers, uh, for, uh, in December that would be in office for the two, for two years.
That's right.
Thank you. Dr. Miller, we're gonna go to Vice Chair Walker.
Thank you so much. I am in alignment, um, with the way that our policy states right now that you already just outlined, um, Ms. Welsh. Uh, so I'm ready to vote on that. It's, it, I, I'm in alignment with, with what's already there. So I just actually wanted to, um, after Dr. Miller got clarity, which I'm super clear on now, I just wanna move that we take this to, um, move this to action to the full board. Thank you.
I did wanna say.
Was that a motion?
Yeah, I made a motion.
And I second.
Okay. Uh, seconded, um, um, any objections?
Well, it's just the three of us, so we can't.
Someone can say I object. I can say it. You know what? I never know. Who knows? Um, so I don't object though. I think that that's fine. Um, what I will say is I wanna say for the public that we aren't all aligned on, um, HB ten seventy nine. And what I mean by we all aren't is, um, the, when the, the, the date that the board goes to fully elected versus appointed and elected. Um, there are members on the board that are, that are getting clarity, so I don't wanna, um, just kind of close that door to that discussion. Um, but I think as far as this policy is concerned, um, I, I think that makes a lot of sense. Um, so before I answer your question, Vice Chair Walker, I just wanna get this to move forward. Um, so I wanna say, Mrs. Welsh, please take under advisement the recommendations made tonight by the Policy and Governance Committee on bylaw ninety two ten um, and move it for further action at the next P and G meeting. Um, Vice Chair Walker.
We had a motion on the floor.
It was moved and seconded and there were no objections, so we moved it forward and that was the advisement. Vice Chair Walker.
No, well, okay.
Oh, go ahead, Dr. Miller. Did you, it, it got moved already. We're gonna move it to the full body. Did you have anything additional on that piece right?
No, that's what I wanted to make sure. I thought Briggs said, um, move it, uh, bring it back to P and G. But it's to the full board, am I correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, that's all.
Uh, wait, yeah, no, no, that's, that, it's not for the full board. I wanna make sure I get to Cindy, um, just to clarify.
Oh, no, it's not for the full board, right?
But wait, why are we breaking it back here? I'm sorry, I didn't understand.
Cause right now it's still a discussion item.
Why are we still discussing? I guess what do I need to make true for us not to discuss? We discussed it like five meetings in a row.
So, right.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So at the next policy and governance meeting, which is March twenty sixth, this is where we're gonna vote to send it to the full board.
Okay, that's just because of process or I feel like you talked this for five meetings in a row.
You did.
Okay.
But, but it has to go through that, because now they want the parliamentarian to look at it and then it has to go through OGC and then it has to go to the superintendent. So, okay, too, it's been fully discussed that we go take it through those steps. So that was where it'll go and then it'll come back for final action.
Okay, just a clarifying question. This is not my original hand question, but is this the first policy that's going to the parliamentarian per his request?
I've sent him the regular session one and I've also sent him the executive session one now. When we get to this stage, I've been, I'm starting to send them to him.
Yeah, I was, Robin, if you could clarify that this isn't like particular for a specific bill, it's for that series of bills.
Bylaws.
With, with, with a board.
Right, it's only for the bylaws because, uh, so many of the bylaws are driven by Robert's Rules of Order and everything. So I, if, I'm not sure who asked, but they said, could we start sending it to him prior to sending it to? And I did talk to OGC and they said they'd rather have him look at it first and then they'll look at it.
I understand it. So just for clarification on what his role is in this, can you just remind me what his role is so that I don't assume? Thank you. Cause we have our amazing Mr. Whitfield, he, I'm with Mr. Whitley here, who's our counsel. And I'm just wondering, just can you tell me what is the role of, oh my gosh, sorry, hold on. Oh my God. Sorry, guys, my phone rang. Um, I just was wondering if you can clarify what is the role of the parliamentarian in this process? Thank you.
I, and I, I, quite honestly, I, I don't know. I, I was just told to send it to the parliamentarian, so someone else can share that answer.
Robin, yeah, I think what we talked about, um, you, Cindy and I, was that we were trying to get clarity on the, the procedure and then making sure that everything is aligned, um, with how it's supposed to go. So the parliamentarian is just, there's the legal end and then there's the parliamentarian end of like what we do in our board meetings. So that's, he's giving that perspective essentially is what the, the answer to your question, um, Vice Chair Walker.
Okay, so based on what he said, I'm sorry, we didn't talk about this as a policy and governance committee, so we could all understand what was happening. It looks like it was just the three of you all that talked. And so I'm just wondering, based on whatever he says, then does it come back to this committee with his recommendations? Like, how does his input, cause you're saying no, but Ms. Welsh is saying yes. So help me just with what guides, I don't know, I just see heads like this. Just, I just.
And let me give you an example. So I, I did call him because he did, and I was also told to call him because he, because they wanted to know what happened to a certain bylaw, which is referenced in another bylaw. And as it turns out, that bylaw was rescinded back in two thousand and five, the bylaw he was requested was talking about. Um, but in the conversation with him, we got talking about the regular session and the executive session. Because in the Opens Meeting Act, it actually talks about closed meetings. But in the education article, it talks about executive session. And if you look at all your language, you guys, uh, in meetings and stuff, you talk about going into clip, into executive session. So I, uh, I, I actually had our conversation to him to clarify, uh, because we do have the two pieces. And then I went to OGC and talked to them about it. But the reality is, is that you're closing your public session to go into executive sessions. So he did provide a, uh, enlightenment in that particular area. So I think it doesn't hurt that, especially because you're talking about how you're operating as a board and stuff. And it's good to get this all worked out here and, you know, and pow- in the bylaws. That way then you're not having major conversations in your board meetings about what should we do or should we do that or whatever.
Okay, thank you. I'm super clear. It just was, thank you for the clarity. I just wasn't in on a chat, so I didn't understand, um, the details. Thank you. And if I can ask my regular question, unless you had something, Mr. Briggs.
Nope, I was recognizing you for that question.
Uh, I don't even remember what the heck my question was. Sorry, that, that's, that's good enough. I, you were talking about, um, oh, 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 I do know what it was. You had mentioned that the, the total board is not yet aligned on the timing and that you just wanted to let the public know. Thank you for doing that. I think that is just fair to say that there is a bill that is already in place. And so to your point, there is a request for additional clarity that I guess will come back here. But regardless, this bill, I mean, this bill, Lord, the policy that we're putting together today isn't predicated on that bill. So we're just mov- we're moving that forward anyway, right? I just wanted to make sure we were all good and clear.
Uh, not connected.
Thank you. Just wanted to put that out there. It's not connected. Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna move to, so it sounds like all parties are happy. So we're gonna move on to, or at least satisfied, um, to four point five, bylaw ninety two seventy one, student board member. Yield the floor to Mrs. Welsh to provide the committee with an update on bylaw ninety two seventy one, student board member.
So I believe at the, uh, they, what we did discuss is at the last meeting, we had tabled it because we were trying to get some clarification on what House Bill ten seventy nine from last year's session was saying in terms of student rights. Because we had done research and, uh, actually OGC had done research and pulled it up in LexisNexis, which is a resource, a source that attorneys use all the time to look at the law and everything. And, um, it, it, it certainly read that it was, that it looked like it was only in place for these, these, um, the, the voting rights that the student board member has, uh, went into place July one twenty twenty three, but it, but was only in place to July one twenty twenty four. And then if you look at prior law prior to twenty twenty three, it goes back to what it was previously. Now, that's when you read the, when you read it in LexisNexis, but if you went to the fiscal note that went to the House Bill ten seventy nine, it said, no, that in twen- twen- uh, July one twenty twenty three, it would go to the, it would immediately, the, the student board member would have the rights that was in the bill and that would be it. They'd have these rights, it would move forward. So, um, I ended up writing a letter to the policy analyst who was responsible for putting together the fiscal and the policy note for that particular bill last year and asked him if he could possibly provide any clarification, since he clearly was interpreting it a certain way. And, um, and, uh, LexisNexis had different interpretations. And so he actually had his boss involved in this whole process and they came back and shared the information. And they actually, so MGA, where you can pull up bills and look at them, they actually take any bill that's passed and put it in codified form on MGA. So they gave, uh, gave me a link to a site and when you, now, it's as clear as can be in this, the MGA form when they have it codified. And it's very clear that those student board remem- remember rights that we were talking about previously, they're still in our policy or in our bylaw, that they, once, once, the, when they're voted, like, it's, they're actually in place right now because the law went affected in July one twenty twenty three and nothing's changing as of July one twenty twenty four. So, um, so that, it, so these rights do stay in place. So I mean, I think that we can move forward. Now, there is that other bill that's hanging out there, but I have a feeling that is probably not gonna pass because, um, I think, because it's basically mandating what every single board of ed needs to do across the state. I do think it's actually, uh, probably pretty problematic because as just as the, you're, you all as a board don't like your authority being taken away from you. I think that's sort of what, how the, the other boards of ed are feeling also. So, um, I, I mean, I- um, I, I mean, I, the question was, do we move forward or not, and I think absolutely that we should be, you know, moving forward. And, and I will share this, that Rain and it, we got, had this conversation, and I said to Rain, cause she was upset, frustrated, I think, because of the process, and she said, when will, when will I ever, we, I be able to do, vote? And I said, well, you should be voting now, because the, the law has been in, in effect since July one twenty twenty-three. And I'm not in your executive session, so I'm not sure, you know, how this all plays out, but I, so she said, I said, but I would recommend that you have any questions, you should go talk to the board's attorney. So that's sort of how we had, had left it at this point in time. But, you know, your policy is, you are, you're putting policy in place, but it doesn't negate what you have in law. It, uh, once the law's there, I mean, you follow the law, we're just, you know, and of course, we can't move as fast to put policy together, you know, and it just takes time, so. So anyway, so that, I think that was the, uh, the basic things, because I think previously, we had talked about, I needed to make a change in the uh, requirements of good standing from two point five to three oh. And I think that I had to, um, uh, we had, we put the campaign fund language in there, and then the big, uh, the other issue had come up previously, had to do with, uh, um, the board members, um, being reimbursed, the board, the Student Board Member being reimbursed, burst, even if, like, say their parent has to transport them to, to a board meeting or whatever, they, the documentation would go in, but the, the actual reimbursement would go to the Student Board Member, so I put that language in there also. Um, and then I did put, uh, the college scholarship language, I did. I, we, we have not, that you all have not had any statement about, um, the amount, and I don't know if, uh, that you want to put in for a college scholarship, and that might just be something that, as transient, depending on the year or something, I don't know, that you want to, uh, and that's your call, and if you want to, uh, uh, specify. And the, and the other thing that came up was the question had to do with do enrollment, of which I had shared the last time, that after having lengthy conversations with the Division of Academics, it, it really, the issue is to get us, to get a college or university to end up offering a course that would meet the requirement, like, would be tailored to what the Student Board Member is not a possibility. And their recommendation was to give, when you're giving, the Student Board Member has an option to receive one year to Social Studies credit for serving on the board, that they would, that would be provide, given a weighted course value. So, for example, if you ended up getting, uh, an A, you would actually get, which is equates to a four, you would actually get a five, which in the, in long run, actually, it, in, you know, ups your GPA.
Right.
So that's basically the changes that we had talked about previously.
Okay, great. Thank you so much, Mrs. Welsh. The floor is now open for discussion and comments. Um, please raise your hand unless you cannot, and, um, just let me know, and I will acknowledge you. Vice Sher Walker.
Yes, I actually love the idea of a scholarship. I also love the idea of not putting a dollar amount inside of it, um, just, you know, for budgetary purposes. Um, and, uh, for the Social Studies Credit, Advanced Credit, I'm a fan of. So for this one, I'm ready to vote, um, therein, uh, how we just had the updates, and then anything additional, I think I need to work with for a bill, cause there's some pieces of the bill I would like changed, but that's not to do without.
Good, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, wanna recognize Mr. Whitley?
Thank you. I just had a, a request. Robin, can you send me the link that you spoke about, that you got from Annapolis? With reference to clarify?
Yes, uh-huh, yeah.
All right, and I don't know if the other board members would like it as well, since there does seem to be a lot of uh, misunderstanding with reference to this House Bill ten seventy-nine, so it would be nice to see exactly what Annapolis believes was meant when they issued this House Bill.
Oh, for the student member, Mr. Whitley?
No, it covers everything. It's just ten seventy-nine, period.
Yes, it would be good to, thank you so much. That's a great question.
So it's actually picking up, it'll be codified as three dash one zero zero two, uh, when you see it, just so you know what, what we're, um, talking about.
Well, thank you so much, Mrs. Welsh, for sending that. I want to echo what I heard, which was that, you know, keeping the bill, um, keeping the policy, but not the bill, um, as is, would be helpful. Um, if you, there's, I think those pieces that you have in there around kind of additional, uh, services that we can provide to the Student Board Member. I would like to keep it optional, so it's like, if it were a year where we could make that happen, then we can have that as an option, right? Um, is there some way to kind of just finagle the language to, um, to kind of say that in, in a legal way?
Uh, I'm not sure I understand what you're saying, like, what?
Uh, yeah, and I need to read through the bills. I'll be honest with you, I haven't read it in a minute, but, um, there's the piece around the credits, right? And we're saying, there's partnerships that would need to exist with universities or community colleges to, in order to get those credits. Um, instead of removing that language, because right now, we're saying, the, the department is saying that there are a lot of extra steps.
What they're saying, it's not possible, is what they're saying, but I could put language in, what you're asking is, or if possible, do enrollment credit.
Right, if, you're right, and if the possibility is that it doesn't exist at all, then don't, let's not do it, let's just go with the recommendation. But if there's, like, right now, it just doesn't exist under the standards that we have, which it sounds like is what I heard you saying. Is that the cor, correct?
The way, uh, so I, I, I bet I emailed them four times. And they, they were adamant that this is not a possibility because of how door enrollment is set up with the relationship between the school system and the, and the university.
Okay, yeah, that's what I was understanding. Okay, so I was just saying, if in the po, in the, in the future that changes, then we have that as an option. So I know that that's like a big hypothetical, cause it's like, right now, ninety-nine percent chance, no, one percent chance, yes. But, or zero percent, yes, but if that is to change, then we'd have that. Um, and that would get to the intent of what board members are advocating for, if that makes sense.
I can do that.
Yeah, that would be the language that I would, however you would.
Okay. I'll add some language in there.
And then that would be also for the other piece. I know you talked about the credits, and then there was the other one, and I apologize, I haven't read through it. Um, so if you can remind me, there was another piece that you were saying, it's up to you all if you want to keep. It was around.
Scholarship.
Scholarships.
I just, the, the question had to do with funding, which, uh, Court Member Walker said it'd be better just to keep that blank. And I was just asking the que, I didn't know if you wanted to put something in or not put something in. Um, I, I mean, I see the value of not having an amount in there, that way it gives you flexibility to do whatever you want to do each year.
And that was pertaining to scholarships?
Yep, the scholarship, the college scholarship.
Yeah, so that was just another one. I was thinking we could be flexible with the language, um, depending on what the current circumstance is.
Well, I think if you leave it as it is, should allocate college, uh, college scholarship for the Student Board Member, then you're very flexible, cause you can make it any amount you want.
Are there other questions?
No, that, I just wanted to make sure we just kept in that we have to give a scholarship, but the flexibility, like you said, I think the last point, um, hits that. Thank you.
And, and it does say shall allocate a college scholarship, so you are required.
Good.
Scholarship.
Good, thank you.
Hey, Mr. Whitley.
And I would just recommend with reference to the scholarship, maybe you put a date in there that you have to do it by, that way, it doesn't slip through the cracks.
Good point.
And if, you know, uh, if the students going to school, they need to know, you know, how the money's gonna be processed, so they can plan as well.
So what would be a good date?
Now is when, um, scholarships are, like, you need to submit them. So we're in March right now, so, um, I think March is the right time for at least, oh, they don't need to apply. Um, school starts in September, so August you need your money in, so I would say, uh, July, August, we should be, um, applying into the school, July, actually. Cause it takes a while.
Mrs. Welsh, can I make a recommendation that maybe you just do, uh, research on that? And, and like whatever other school districts might be doing, or whatever seems reasonable, the date fits for what actually needs to happen?
Or when they, when you, when they need the money, so when they give the money, it's up to you to, to get the money, but when you're gonna give the money to the student, right?
Like, when's the best time? Cause I wouldn't want to pick a date that maybe isn't, so just if there's, I'm sure there's something out there that exists.
Wait, we're giving the money to the school, right, not to the student? Where's the money going? To the school directly, right?
Scholarship, like, like, yeah, like a regular scholarship, but I guess there's a timeframe that schools off, uh, accept scholarships or whatever.
Yeah, you mentioned to the student, and I just want to make sure.
I didn't, no. That was my fault. I apologize.
Thank you.
And you also want to make sure we leave time for the school system to process the check and get it to the school, uh, get it to the, to the university. Um, having been on the, end of, uh, processing payments by the school system, I know it can take some time.
Absolutely.
Maybe this is reaching out to that department and just kind of seeing, I'm sure someone can give us an expert answer on that. Um, uh, Mrs. Adley, Ms. Adley?
Quick question, would the, who's, who's funding the scholarship? Is it the board or administration?
I'm sorry.
Uh, the board in collaboration with the superintendent is the language. But somewhere in the way, somewhere along the budget process, there has to be a certain amount, I guess, allocated for it. I don't know. I don't know what you do with your budgets. I mean, I, I know it's usually the superintendent's budget, then, then goes to the board for approval, so um, it has to begin with the superintendent.
Well, I think we can iron out all of these details, um, offline, if you all think the same thing. I think we can probably, there's, I mean, I know a Google search would help me to like, just really quickly, but I, I wouldn't do it right now. So, um, Mrs. Welsh, I'm happy to send that information if those are additional questions you have when we check in on Friday.
Um, no, I don't, no, Cindy's just asking the question, who, who's gonna, who's, is it the boards or the superintendents? So, I mean, that, you don't necessarily even have to have that sitting in policy. I mean, this is, you're just making a statement, we're gonna have a scholarship, but somewhere along the way, you better have it written out somewhere, how you're gonna go about it, so that, just like Dennis said, you know, it doesn't get lost.
Right. Well, I, I, I knew, I know I'm seeming like I'm being rude and I'm rushing. That's only because I want to make sure we get to seven o'clock. Um, and, and get through all the other parts, so I think that's a question that we can likely answer moving forward. So I'm gonna say, colleagues, should this policy be brought forward for committee action or retained for further discussion?
It should move forward for committee action based on what we talked about today for follow-ups.
Okay, great.
I think it's just dates that need to be aligned for getting a scholarship.
Yep. So, Mrs. Welsh, please take under advisement the recommendations made tonight by the Policy and Governance Committee on Bylaw ninety, uh, two seventy-one, and move it forward for further action at the next PNG meeting. Thank you so much for that. Um, and apologies for my kind of curtiness, but I just.
No, no, that's okay.
Okay, we can get through everything. So we're gonna move to fi, five point O, items for review or action. There are two items for review or action. Again, each discussion round will last two and a half minutes. We're gonna move to item five point one, Policy zero one two five, Non-Discrimination. Colleagues, may I have a motion to forward Policy zero one two five, Non-Discrimination to the full board with the recommendation to seek public comment? So moved, is there a second? Vice Sher Walker. Okay. All right, it's been moved and seconded. I would now give the floor to Mrs. Welsh to provide an overview on Policy zero one two five.
So, um, basically, uh, Policy zero one two five, it's a, a non-discrimination policy that, uh, is referencing non-discrimination towards students, employees, and third parties, and it provides information about if, in fact, that you have, that basically talks about the, uh, school system addressing allegations on which students or employees or third parties have been subjected to discrimination, either committed by supervisors, other employees, students, and other third parties in the school. And the key components of the policy are prohibition of employment discrimination, uh, prohibition of discrimination in educational programs activities, reporting and investigating incidents of discrimination, discipline, disciplinary action for individuals who have committed acts of discrimination, uh, protection against retaliatory actions, for, actions for individuals, reporting incidents of discrimination and confidentiality and privacy. And then there is a provision within the policy that says that the superintendent will provide an annual report to the Board of Ed on reported incidents of discrimination against student, employee, and third party disagree by subgroups. And that's it. You're muted, Board Member Briggs.
Thank you for that. I said that was really quick. I was giving, I was complimenting you. Thank you for moving so fast. So, um, are there any objections to forwarding Policy zero one, uh, two five to the full board with the recommendation to seek public comment? Okay, hearing none, the motion passes. The policy will be moved to the full board with the recommendation to seek public comment. We're gonna move to item five point two, Policy twenty-six hundred, Records and Documents Management Program. Colleagues, may I have a motion to forward Bylaw Regular Board Meetings, Policy twenty-six hundred, uh, Records and Documents Management Program to the full board with the recommendation to seek public comment?
So move.
Okay, second. It's been moved and seconded. I would now give the floor to Mrs. Welsh to provide an overview on Policy twenty-six hundred.
So this is, uh, Records and Document Management Program. And, um, it's basically has been revised to enhance, um, the efficiency and security of the records and documents that we maintain. Um, and, um, it actually, hold on one second, it actually, um, there's lots of definitions in there, but the policy addresses, um, uh, the, the documents that are covered by the policy, which is practically everything, then record retention schedules, and then processes to maintain, destroy records according to record retention schedules. Um, and then, um, it also talks about the fact that the record retention schedules have to be reviewed and updated at least every two years, and approved in writing by the superintendent, and submitted to the state archives for review and approval. And then the policy also addresses safeguards against damage, damage removal or loss of records. Um, and then it talks about the fact that, um, employees will be held responsible for any of the records that they receive, oversee, and create. And I think that is basically it, as far as this, this goes.
Okay, thank you so much, Mrs. Welsh. Are there any objections to forwarding Policy twenty-six hundred to the full board with the recommendation to seek public comment? Hearing none, the motion passes. The policy will be moved to the full board with the recommendation to seek public comment. We're gonna now move to item six point O, Committee Recommendations, New Business and Governance. There are twelve items for new business. We will also keep the two point five minute discussion rule. Um, we're gonna move to item six point one, Policy Artificial Intelligence. Colleagues, may I have a motion to forward new policy, Artificial Intelligence, to the full board with the recommendation to be advanced as first reader?
So move, Mr. Chair.
Is there a second? I'll second. Thank you much. It's moving seconded. I would now give the floor to Mrs. Welsh to provide an overview of public comments received about the new policy.
So basically, we just got one comment, and it was from a PGPS staff member. And this person said that they do applaud the district's efforts to acknowledge the use of AI in the classroom, and they do believe it's gonna here to stay, and that they think that the district needs to be proactive and innovative with AI implementation. Um, and then they asked some questions like, what should AI integration in the curriculum look like? How does the county value academic integrity? By having, and then I think it got cut off for some reason. I can't read the end of it. Okay, you can see, by having expectations around AI will help our school, scholars deal with their real world issues as they become productive citizens. So if you recall, in your policy, you actually have a thing where you talk about a work group that will be made up of many of the different divisions within the school system, as well as students being, uh, at different times being invited, as well as also higher ed institutions to give guidance and direction. So, I, in, and in that process, as they develop many of the, of the things that this, uh, particular, uh, public comment person is providing, it will, well, they will eventually develop an administrative procedure that should have all the specific details that I think this person is requesting.
Great. Are there any objections to forwarding the new policy to the, uh, to the full board with the recommendation to be advanced as first reader? Hearing none, the motion passes. The policy will be moved to the full board with the recommendation to be advanced as first reader. We're gonna move on to item six point two, Policy fifteen hundred, Parent and Community Advisory Council. Colleagues, may I have a motion to forward Policy fifteen hundred, Parent and Community Advisory Council to the full board with the recommendation it be advanced as first reader?
So move.
Um, is there a second? So, I'll second that. Um, and so it's been moved and seconded. I would now give the floor to Mrs. Welsh to provide an overview of public comments received from Policy fifteen hundred.
So we did, I think, and I, I'm trying to find out what I did, oh, here's the one policy. Okay, the one comment. So the first comment is actually from a person who came and provided public comment when they were at the, um, at our committee meeting, and their concern is with, with the, uh, and this is something you might want to talk about and make change to the policy, I don't know. They are concerned that members that are, have been there for two years, and now if they want to continue, they're allowed to have two terms, and if they want to continue, they have to, um, apply again. And she, she, she is, she is upset about that, because she feel, would like, really prefer that if you're already existing P C A C, uh, member, that you would be able to continue in service for another two years, as long as you don't go over the two-term limit. So that, that is the request, and she did provide that in person when she was here, and then she did a public comment at the board meeting.
Great, thank you so much. I think there's a second comment?
Yes, oh, and then there is a second comment, hold on a second, and then there was another comment that had to do with, um, I'm trying to find it. Um, oh, so another person, um, there was an incident in the P C A C meeting that happened last week. Um, and uh, because our board chair came to talk about um, the, just the interactions with P C A C and everything. And a person, uh, one of the members of P C A C uh were not uh very pleased with what the board chair said. And this partic- and uh, this particular comment, the person from this comment, that not the person in P C A C, but the person who provided the comments said. That it was embarrassing to see parents attack the chair of the board. This is not an advisory group. These folks should never represent a community of schoolchildren. They were all a joke. So that evidently really upset this particular viewer. Of the P C A C meeting, uh, and then provided public comment um, for us related to that. So that was the only other comment that we received.
Hey, are there any objections to forwarding Policy fifteen hundred to the full board with the recommendation to be advanced as first reader?
May I ask one question, please? Does the committee though, wanna entertain the idea of not applying for the, for a second term or not? I'm just asking that question.
Yes, I do.
Yeah.
When, when I'm recognized, thank you.
Okay, well, I want to recognize Vice Chair Walker.
Oh, thank you. Um, yes, I am a proponent of having to apply again. This is a volunteer position and we don't know who the amazing volunteers are in the community. And I think that for each term of two years, that um, everyone should have to reapply. And the great news is that if they're doing amazing work and people can see it, then it'll be no problem with getting in again. It's not like we have eighty million. Um, at this particular time coming in, but I do, I'm a proponent of um, having to apply again. Thank you.
Yes, and I wanna, I wanna echo that. I think it's just fair. Um, I think you have tons of families that wanna engage. They may not know what P C A C is. Um, and I think that this provides equity of voice, actually, uh, you know, equity of experience, um, perspective. Um, and I think that just because you're not a P C A C member doesn't mean you can't engage with P C A C. So I think that that's the goal, is that, you know, we can build like a coalition of individuals who, even if they're sitting on it, they're engaged and they're excited about supporting the work that happens. Um, so I would echo that. And if entertaining that question, um, which it sounds like we're agreeing, Dr. Mill, I'm not sure if you want to opine on this. And if not, then I think we can move forward.
I'm okay with it.
So um, are there any objections to forwarding Policy fifteen hundred to the full board with the recommendation to be advanced as first reader? Hearing none, the motion. Okay, I think you were saying no. Uh, so hearing none, the motion passes. The policy will be moved to the full board with the recommendation to be advanced as first reader. We're moving on to item six point three through six point twelve. Um, six point three is Policy Intellectual Property Rights. Six point four is Policy Search and Seizure. Six point five is new policy, Student Use of Social Media and Portable Electronic Devices in Schools. Six point six is Policy eleven twenty, Public Information Act Requests. Six point seven is uh, Policy zero one one five, Information Technology Services Acceptable Usage Guidelines. Um, item six point eight is Policy um, fifty one thirty one point one, School Bus Conduct. Item six point nine is Policy zero one one three, Boundaries, Attendance Areas. It's a rescission. Uh, six point ten is Policy twenty five seventy, Closing School Buildings, which is a rescission. Um, item six point eleven is um, Policy fifty one ten point two, Attendance, which is a rescission. Item six point twelve is Policy eighty nine ninety one, Boundary Changes, which is a rescission. So items uh, six point three through six point twelve were advanced to seek public comments. No public comment was received. May I have a motion to forward item six point three through six point twelve to the full board with the recommendation to be advanced as first reader? Um, I'm gonna say so moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any objections? Hearing none, the motion passes. The policy will be moved to the full board with the recommendation to be advanced as first reader. We're now gonna move on to follow-up items and next steps, which is item seven point one. Uh, follow-ups from previous meetings will be posted on Board Docs upon receipt. Item seven point two is next steps. The next Policy and Governance Committee meeting will be held on Tuesday. Um, the, the, the date here is wrong, so I just want to make sure I get the date. Twenty six, okay. Uh, Tuesday, March twenty six, two thousand twenty four. At five P M, this meeting will be virtual. Please check the P G C P S Board webpage for more information. Um, we're moving on to closing remarks from the Chair and adjournment. Um, so item eight point one, Closing Remarks and Adjournment. Thank you, everyone, for a great meeting with me, uh, with meaningful discussions around board policies. Um, I'm excited to say we got this done in the time that we said that we would, um, a minute over. Is there any additional business to bring before the committee this evening?
No business, but I'd like to make the comment that I'd like to thank Miss Adeline for her um, uh, the, uh, the minutes. Which have been very good, um, and succinct. And I thank you, Mr. Chair, for pushing this so that I can get out of here and attend my next meeting on time.
Um, Vice Chair Walker, before I acknowledge you, um, I just want to see, is there any uh additional, well, I guess there is additional business. So yes, Vice Chair Walker.
Yeah, I was just gonna say thank you. And I just wanted to make notes to our amazing committee that if we can get it through at this particular timing, we can do this every single time. Great job.
I love the positivity. Thank you so much for that. Uh, so may I have a motion to adjourn the March twelfth, twenty twenty four Policy and Governance Meeting?
So move, Mr. Chair.
Is there a second? So I'll, I'll second that. Uh, so it's been moved and seconded. Any objections? All right, so hearing none, the time is now seven oh two. This March twelfth, twenty twenty four Policy and Governance Committee meeting is adjourned. Thank you so much for tuning in.
Hey, oh, after we stop the recording, can I just talk to you real quick, Mr. Briggs? Real quick. Okay, thank you.